Welcome to the Rutherford County School Board. The December first meeting, if you would stand please and I will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The agenda tonight is a short one but an important one and the first and major point tonight, of course, is to finalize the zone lines for Rocky Fork Middle School. We have met, this is the fifth time on this subject now, and the director will lead us here and Mr. Morgan will help us out.
Okay, you have a packet tonight of some maps which have been shown at each of the meetings with parents and all, as we added to them. Now you have four options that we've talked about. The option one, which is your first one, was actually the one that we presented from the district with that particular area, which Mr. Morgan has that up on the screen for us right now. Option number two was some that Mr. Holliday suggested that we add some areas where future development could be, so that's number two was considered. And then number three, Mr. Young mentioned some area around Shirley Road and some of that, so that was discussed, that would be your label is option three. And option four is the combination that includes all of those areas that you discussed. But again, then the last sheet that you have is some sibling information. Some of you asked information about numbers of siblings from each of the schools and the grades, and so Mr. Morgan's prepared that for you and prepared to discuss it if you would like to talk some more about that. So, Mr. Chairman, I think we're ready for questions or other explanations?
The only, the only major changes that I notice on here, other than the land where practically nobody lives, but it's probably pretty good for the future and I think we kind of agree that was a good idea, is that the opening number of students is on two options is 709 and on two of them is 712, so virtually no difference. And so, as far as I'm concerned, I have no questions, but some of you may.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hear a staff explanation and recommendation on the sibling analysis that's been done.
You want to share that with him because you prepared that, Mr. Morgan?
Yes, sir.
I let you do that, I've looked at it, but he's prepared.
So if you'll turn to the last page. Basically, this was broken down by the separate areas that make, are the makeup of this new zone. And it's always interesting, at least, to see what, how those students come from, the different grades, and work their way into our grade for next year. The, the children coming from Rock Springs, and remember, these are just the numbers of those that have siblings within that same zone, in that same grade range. So, next year, these will be not fifth, sixth, and seventh, but sixth, seventh, and eighth. So, th- these are going to graduate up. So, for the Rock Springs Middle, as you see, you've got 27 current fifth graders, sixth graders are 34, and seventh are 30. One other thing I should note, too, these numbers include, include any zone exemptions to other school, to other school zones and magnet students. Because they could change their mind and decide to go back to their home school next year. They could consider Rock, Rocky Fork as an excellent alternative to wherever they're placed right now and just go on back to where they're zoned. So, from Smyrna, you've got that split area. There are several more because of that. Eighty-five Fifth, eighty-three Sixth, and seventy-eight Seventh. And from Stewart's Creek Middle, you have fifty-seven Fifth, sixty-one Sixth, and fifty-nine Seventh. And all those are, as I was explaining before, all those are noted where they're coming from and, of course, where they're zoned to.
Mr. Chairman, if there's not any questions about the actual zone line, I'll be prepared to make a motion here when that, that's determined anytime soon. Certainly want to give board members an opportunity to express their thoughts if there are still some on the, on the zone. Since it has changed, which wouldn't, so very, very little over the past, well, since really we got the first maps, which is a testament to your excellent job, by the way, I'd say. But it has changed very little. Every board member here, we've had four extensive looks at this and three public hearings on it. But I would not want to go any further if somebody has a question or a concern that they might want to ask at this point. I'm going to give you a few more seconds and then, Mr. Holliday.
Mr. Chairman, I'm thinking about three questions. First, we have the zone lines and, like Mr. Blair, I'm comfortable with the zone lines. I certainly have a preference and am, am prepared and interested in moving forward there. The second is the question of grandfathering.
That's a completely different motion. That's four.
Okay, and then the sibling issue. I guess I was going to ask the question and that is the answer then, that will we address each one of those separately?
Well, since they're on the agenda that way, I really wasn't aware, but since you wanted to talk about it, that page five was fine and Mr. Morgan's explanation was, of course, super as it always is. I was waiting for, to do that on, on the grandfather option, which is four on the agenda.
Okay.
But, you know, if you have a question that relates back to the actual zone lines, if they're connected in some way that you want an explanation, we want to find out what it is. If not, we'll move, we'll take a motion here, a vote, and move on to four. Okay, I think, I think we're ready for a motion on, on the zone line itself. Mr. Blair?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve option four.
Would you put that up? It may already be up, just so the audience can see it. We have paper copies. Okay, board, I need, I need a second.
Good, Ms. Moore.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Moore, thank you. Any, any discussion, further explanation? Yes, sir?
Is there reason for the area at Shirley Road to be connected, you know, in a, in a spirit of contiguous zone area? And if it were connected there, does that have a major impact?
If...
How many students were on that Shirley Road?
Three, three that would be impacted by this particular movement. There's one little tangent that connects Shirley Road to Old Nashville Highway. But I, that I know of, anything that I remember of that area, there's one side of, of the road has nothing on it, the other side has, I think, three or four homes. And I don't believe that there are any more students in there, but the addition of even one student per house is not going to make a significant difference in transportation and, you know, the size that's coming into the school. That fewer number is, is not going to make that, but if a bus comes down there, it's got to go that way to get the kids anyway.
Right. Does it, does it matter to the board? I'm genuinely posing the question because I, I don't know that I have a strong feeling here, but as we draw zone lines, a lot of times, we expect them to be contiguous. We certainly talk about Mr. Blair's school board zone and the fact that it's not. Do we want to have a school zone that is not connected?
Is it a big deal just to take that little part in?
You could, I mean, not you could take it in, but again, I don't think we have any students there, but we could draw the line on up.
Just show it as a...
There's, there's no reason why I can't do that.
And you need to offer an amendment to Mr. Blair's motion and we'll vote on that amendment.
I'd offer that amendment.
Yeah, I need, I need a second on that, please. To, as, uh, let me make sure I'm clear here on where the three students are, I'm sorry.
What you're doing is adding the part of Baker Road that runs between Shirley Road and Old Nashville Highway.
That's exactly correct. It, it seems to be a very small distance here, but I have no, I don't know, you, you said there's four or five houses on one side.
Yeah, it could be maybe 300, 400 feet.
Youngsters, maybe, okay. Board, do you understand the amendment? I, I do need a second on the amendment if I didn't get one.
I'm not sure I understand it. What are we saying now?
You see, on option, on option four, and correct me here, somebody, if I'm wrong, on option, on option four, the, the, the number three there, okay, that's Shirley Road. You come up on Shirley Road and you hit Baker Road, turn right, and go the Old Nashville Highway. You, you say that's three or 400 feet?
Yes, sir, I, I brought it up a little bit closer so you can see what's involved.
Mr. Young, was that your intended to include that in the first place?
Actually, what I had thought on that three, it would probably make more sense to include that in with Stewart's Creek versus Rocky Fork, but that way it would be more, to you. I don't know how, we missed that in the last meeting or something. It just seemed like to me it would be more fitting for those three to go in with Stewart's Creek than it would be to go all the way to Rocky Fork.
Are they at Stewart's Creek now or are they now on Shirley Road?
Right now, they're in Blackman. The, in Blackman, the purple shaded area to, to the south is, this is all Blackman, this is Stewart's Creek, and this is, I believe, Smyrna.
Let's not get too far down the road here. Uh, we, we have an amendment and, and for now, it dies for lack of a second. So, in order to, if, if Mr. Young, do you want to make?
I tell you what I'd like to do, Mr. Chairman, if it's all right with Ms. Moore, since there's a little bit of confusion on what Mr. Young intended for this, on, on this map, I'd like to, I'd like to pull my motion until we get a clarification with that.
Ms. Moore, will you draw your second?
I would concur.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Young?
Yeah, that was just my thought process whenever we was looking at undeveloped land, that those, that area there would be included in with Stewart's Creek instead of Blackman because Blackman is already overcrowded as it is. We don't need to leave area open to be zoned for Blackman whenever it's already overcrowded because middle, middle schools, so. If it's not a busing issue and you think those, that area should go to Rocky Fork, then I'm, I just thought it'd be more convenient for them to go to Stewart's Creek and just make it part of their zone.
My question will be the bus route. For example, we take Shirley Road because interstate cuts them off to get to Stewart's Creek, they're probably going to have to go back to Old Nashville Highway and go all the way up. Baker Road goes over.
Mm-hmm.
It could probably go, it could probably go all the way out to the end of Baker, but that, the rest of that is Blackman Middle School students, after the rest of Baker Road, so.
Mr. Morgan has brought up on the screen now, the existing zone lines, and it indicates that Baker Road is serviced by transportation to Stewart's Creek Middle School. And so, really, I think what Mr. Young is proposing is that the end of the Baker Rudd transportation run would be down Shirley Road, and that would all feed towards Stewart's Creek Middle School in response to the room that we're creating at Stewart's Creek with the rezoning toward Rocky Fork Middle. And so, the undeveloped land at Shirley Road would be potential growth into Stewart's Creek Middle, as opposed to that undeveloped land being potential growth into Blackman Middle. Mr. Young, I, I support what you're, what you're thinking, and it seems to me that you may be heading toward option number two, and, and I think that's where I am as well. That would take in the area at Rocky Fork Road, the undeveloped land there, on the west side of 24, and, and move us to the option two zone lines for Rocky Fork Middle School.
Well, no, option two right now takes Shirley Road to Blackman, correct?
It leaves Shirley...
It just leaves it off the table.
Leaves it off.
It stays where it is.
But what Mr. Young is suggesting is taking Shirley Road to Stewart's Creek, which is what I thought option four was.
That's what I was thinking what option four was, too, all along.
Yeah.
Now, we're saying that, that that area would go to Rocky Fork instead of Stewart's Creek.
The way I understood the four options that you gave me the last time I met with you was what we had discussed previously. The option two was what you see on the, on the board right now, which is the second page. The third was to leave that out, but include Shirley Road, and the fourth was to include all of them in one zone.
But Mr. Young intended for Shirley Road to go to Stewart's Creek.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd propose, for the sake of clarity, a motion for Rocky Fork Middle School, and then we can immediately follow that with a motion that addresses the Shirley Road area, taking it to Stewart's Creek Middle School. Would you prefer that they be in one combined motion?
Well, let me say this, what, what, then I think I can answer your question. What about these, I may be behind the group, what about these three students that presently go to Blackman?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? All right, and, and we are proposing here that we change them next year to Stewart's Creek?
I would say grandfather them in.
Okay, that was my question. Because if I, that was going to be my question. If I was a parent, we didn't give Blackman a chance to comment on this at all. We had no public hearings with Blackman. I realize it's just three students. That doesn't, I don't care if it's one or 100, you know, they didn't have an opportunity. If I, if it was my child and they were happy at Blackman, I want them to stay there.
You may be adding additional bus thing, too, because Lee Road Avenue and those others in there are going to Blackman. So, you're going to have to, you may be running a bus in to pick up Shirley Road for those kids.
Mr. Young, would you object to leaving it as is and, and going with option two?
I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that. It's, the only thing I was concerned about is just that potential growth there. We just didn't need any more students going to Blackman. That, that was my whole concern.
But if we grandfather the three in that are presently at Blackman, that solves at least part of the problem, and they're going to have plenty of notice that they're going to be going to Stewart's Creek after this. Uh, so I don't have a problem with, with either one. And I, I think probably, Mr. Holliday, if you want to, or Mr. Blair, if, if y'all want to make, one of you makes a motion, then, yes, Ms. Moore?
Um, question, just again, for my clarification, that's, we still have a concern about the transportation on the bus route, right? Even if we do grandfather those three and let them stay at Blackman?
Yes, if, if one says, "I want to go to Stewart's Creek," then you're going to, on a bus in there.
Or we'll have to next year anyway, if other students come up and they're rezoned for Stewart's Creek.
We only have three in this part of the part, I don't, they were not, were there additional ones on that? Are you going to do all of Shirley Road?
It would have been, everything that I've included was, it was basically all of Shirley Road from, from the interstate back.
But you're still at three students by doing...
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
So, yeah, you would run a bus in to pick up any of those three that wanted to go over Stewart's Creek.
Is that problematic?
Additional miles and time, but, you know.
It, it seems to me that we're probably better off going to...
The two, okay.
Mr. Holliday, your thoughts?
Two. Okay, and we're ready for another motion.
Motion to approve option two.
Okay, option two, have a motion, I need a second. Option two.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Any further discussion? All in favor of option two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed to that? And the answer to that is no.
If you'd like, just, then to look, or then to look at that whole section there, and you might be, Shirley Road and then those connecting areas, it might be something to look at.
I just think we need to keep it on the radar if we start seeing a lot of development going on out there in that area.
Yes, sir.
It wouldn't be fair to the public to, to make these changes without any more.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Well done, sir, and, and I know this is a tremendous job. It's appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay, the, number four on your agenda, Rocky Fork Middle School, grandfather option, director has a motion?
This one mirrors the same, we actually used the same language that you used when you did Oakland Middle. About, was it three years back, Mr. Morgan, something like that?
Yes, sir.
Changed the line for Oakland Middle, so this language is the same that the board at that time used. This is the recommended approval, the motion to approve students being rezoned to Rocky Fork Middle School currently in sixth or seventh grade may elect a grandfather option to remain at their 2016, 2017 school for the remainder of the middle school years via the zone exemption process. As with all zone exemptions, parents must provide transportation for their students if they choose a grandfather option. There would be no universal sibling option available for grandfathered students. So, you're limited to basically seventh and eighth grade, is what you're talking about.
This year's sixth and seventh.
True, and would be seventh and eighth next year.
Right.
Motion approved.
Leave that, Mr. Hodge? Second? Second from Mr. Estes, discussion on the grandfather option, board. Okay, all in favor of the recommended, the approval of number four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? None. Okay, thank you. Board, number five is questions for the state legislators which are due today. I'm going to kind of revise that just a little bit. If, if you want to give me your, your copy of any questions that you might want to ask for our December 12th meeting, that would be fine, and I know I asked for them, but we've had a little bit of change on that, which I'll get to in just a second. Well, what, what we want to avoid that night, if at all possible, is that we repeat questions, maybe more than we can have follow-up, certainly, and I know better than to try to limit something you all might want to ask. But I, I don't want to belabor points that they have already covered. Also, you need to know that we are not certain at this point just how many legislators we're going to have. There are six people, and frankly, right now, we stand at two or perhaps maybe three. And we will have 13 board members here, the seven of us, both directors, Dr. Gilbert from the city, and six of the seven city school board members will be here. That's a lot of questions that could be asked of, of two or three people, and we obviously wanted to go fairly and smoothly. So, all I would ask you to do is just to have two or three different things that you might want to discuss or have discussed, questions that night, and, and let's try to cover as many topics as possible, let's put it that way. Rather than, I, I know if we had, I guess I know, if we had a number one thing that we're concerned about, it's vouchers. I would think that was obvious, I know that's true with the city, well, we can't ask them 13 voucher questions. I mean, that would be very unfair, I think, so, okay. Any, any, any comment on, on what I just said? Is there a problem there somewhere that I'm overlooking or haven't done a good job? Please let me know. Yes, sir?
I was just going to point out, I have received inquiries from various civic organizations who would like to be present, and that is an open meeting, anyone who would want to come and attend and observe that meeting. I think that you may be aware of some additional people, but I, I know that there are civic organizations that have contacted me and asked, "Would it be okay if we came? Can we, can we come and observe?" I, I raise that because the community is interested in the dialogue between those who are invested in education in Rutherford County and those who will represent us in the state legislature. I hope it's not a one-sided conversation based on attendance alone.
I believe you told me tonight, Mr. Holliday, and I've, I've forgotten, you, you told me that you invited a group, then who was that?
I, I've had conversation with, with the League of Women Voters.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And, and some of, some of their board members have, have shown interest in, in that conversation and, and wondered, you know, could they attend? I welcomed them and told them by all means. You mentioned to me that the REA, as well as the Retired Teachers Association, the Murfreesboro Education Association, a number of very interested parties are interested in that conversation. I certainly applaud those legislators who have responded to us in a positive way, that they're interested in having that conversation with their constituents, and I hope that in time, more will find a possibility in their schedule to be here as well.
Mr. Campbell, I know, who's chairman of the city school board, invited the city council and the MEA, as you said just a minute ago. I did invite, I asked the mayor's secretary to invite the county commission, they're, they're the funding body, the city council, of course, and the county commission. And, and also invited the media, Murfreesboro Post, WGNF Radio, and the Daily News Journal. And we have, I, I think, I just don't know what else that we could do to contact our, our six legislators. And what we, and Ms. Moore has done her, her duties as our liaison with the state legislature, and she can comment if she wants to, but I know that she has written a letter to each one of them some time ago. She has called at least twice each legislator. I have done so as well, and Mr. Campbell has done so. So, I'm hopeful, and we'll just have to wait and see what happens. That meeting is 5:30 on Monday, the 12th of December, right here in this, in this room. I don't know what else we could, and I, I, obviously, as you all do, and as the city wants to do, have some sort of dialogue and swapping of ideas and comments. And speaking of comments, do any of you have anything that you might want to say? Ms. Moore, I, I may have said too much already, but I mean, I know you have worked diligently on this, and I appreciate it.
Well, thank you, and, and what you said was accurate. And Ms. Michaels, of course, as we know, sent out our letter the day after the election was over, so these legislators have all had their letters for, what, well over... Four weeks now? Four weeks. Yeah, almost five. And, yeah, it's, it's, it is a little disheartening, quite frankly, that, that I can't get return phone.
Well...
We've had some that had declined. When I look at the fact that one of our legislators actually sits on our education committee as representative, and they're not interested, or for whatever reason, don't see this as a priority, to come in and speak with us, it's discouraging.
Well, I, I guess, well, we could be disheartened, but let's at least wait till that night, till we get totally disheartened. And I realized, in, in, in calling on you and looking at you, that I did forget that our director of schools also emailed each legislator. And, and that was some time ago, I don't know, a couple of weeks.
The day after the election congratulating them on being... The day after the election congratulating them on, um, being re-elected or elected.
And, uh, and I think, um, I believe that I, I had already contacted them, I, I'm trying to remember the exact date, that would have been November the eighth. So we're, we're, we're gonna be looking at a month of notice. Um, and it's not like this is the first time this meeting's ever been held, because it has been held, and it's an, an obvious time to have it, just, just before the legislature meets. I don't know when else you'd want to do it, uh, other than just before they actually, uh, meet. But at any rate, okay, um, that's where we are on number five. Uh, we have, um, and I'll let the director explain what number six is, which you all know already, so we need to decide on a date. Mr. Odom.
Uh, number six is to be to schedule a trip for property observation inspection for future schools. As you know, in our five-year building plan, we do have a number of properties that, that we were proposing to purchase, with some of those in the current year that we're in. And so Mr. Clardy has located some potential properties. So sometime either before Christmas or right after Christmas in order, 'cause anything goes through the commission, of course, the process, you know, it has to go through health and ed, then budget and finance, then full commission. So, you know, the month it takes for that to go, but whenever you can, we do need to probably take a trip and look at some of those potential properties. Do you want to add anything, Mr. Clardy?
We have, uh, three people to look at for the Christmas property. It's a morning work on Saturday morning, maybe eight thirty. And, uh, returning by midnight, I believe, maybe eleven thirty in that area.
I'm gonna suggest to the group that, uh, we do this on the agenda. And, um, Cirk and I, I want you to know right now that I can go, me personally, this Saturday if you wish to do that. Or the tenth, I cannot go the seventeenth, but that's just me, I don't ha- I don't have to be there. Now, now, Mr. Clardy, are you, are you driving us, is that the plan? Okay, uh, that's scary enough, no, that's. I'm sorry, Mr. Clardy, I was just kidding. Uh, I would say, uh, uh, but I, I'm not gonna make a motion, so somebody else is gonna have to make a motion if, uh, if the third or the tenth, and I'd like to get this done before Christmas, I think you would too.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask just a couple of quick questions?
Absolutely.
I know, and, and I have a building plan in front of me, and unfortunately, I think the last time we went over it was actually the meeting that I missed back several weeks ago. Um, and I don't have it in front of me, but I know we've got several new schools in the, in the works that we're looking for land for, specifically which of these three properties are for.
Priority order, this was one that we talked about, a, um, three-school complex somewhere between Veterans Parkway and possibly Amal Road.
Is that the one that's on there that's like eight forty, something, it's a, it would be, they would be Smyrna schools, right? Okay.
Um, we know that, and what's driving this is, of course, the Shelton property there, that Bob Parks developed seven hundred and fifty homes or so. Also, some of you know more about the Amal Road, the Independent Hill Road, uh, that, that has been purchased by an out-of-state developer. For how many houses was that one potential?
Twelve to fifteen.
Twelve hundred, something like that. And, 'cause we have no control of when it might start or how quickly, but.
Uh, you know, I remember the final. I think they had in order for some green space or so, they may have gotten it down to twelve.
That's, I'd say we need to get on it. So I guess my question then comes down to, are these three properties that you're suggesting we look at, are they all for that particular pot of schools, or are we looking at, 'cause I know there were others that we were still looking for.
This one, because the others are in another part of the county, really, would probably be another.
I'm good with the agenda.
I'm happy to make a motion that we schedule that, uh, land tour and visit for Saturday, December the tenth.
Ten, you say, eight thirty?
On the tenth, if there is someone that is not able to go and would like to come over here earlier, we'll take a ride out and take a look, uh, if that will be a gap.
Okay, we, we have a, a motion and a second. Um, any, any comment? On the, the motion was the. I'm sorry?
I didn't get the second.
Mr. Blair? The motion was the tenth at eight thirty? Yes, sir.
I'm just, uh, I'll give you, Mr. Clardy heads up, or whoever, I won't be here the tenth, I'll be out of town, but I'll, I'll hook up with you, so. I don't have a problem with that.
And you're o- you're okay with?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. Any other comment? All in favor of the motion, which is the tenth of December at eight thirty? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, there is none, Mr. Director? Approval of the E S S, E E S I resolution?
Energy Efficient School Initiative is E E S I. At the request of the county's Health and Education Committee, Mr. Clardy was requested to come and make them a report about, uh, what we were doing for energy efficiency, uh, because Rutherford County is one of the ones that's kind of leading in some of these particular areas. And asking him probably two months ago to come and make a report, and so we did bring a gentleman from E E S I and all. Um, what's spurring the resolution tonight, after, as we were completing the presentation, Mr. Jordan, um, Mr. Jeff Phillips, mentioned, you know, this really needs to be, we'd like to support this too, possibly as a commission. But said that, um, the steer- it need to go to the steering committee if we were gonna make the December meeting, because it's actually requesting something from the legislature, and it's something we could discuss with our legislators too. That the steering committee meets on December the fifth, next Monday. So the only way we could do it was put it on your meeting tonight, and then if we approve it, then I can deliver it to the county for the steering committee on Monday. And then they, if they approve, they can then put it as a resolution. And I'm not sure exactly what night the full county commission meets. That was the purpose, to try to get it done in December. To, to try to get it done before the legislature convenes. So if you'd like, I'll read the resolution and we can choose what to do.
I would like, I particularly like about the seventh or eighth one down. And I think the committee was, was thrilled with, uh, with the, what's on this piece of paper.
Okay. Um, whereas Rutherford County Schools experiencing significant savings in utility expenses due to grants and low-interest loans from the Tennessee Energy Efficient Schools Initiative, E E S I, thereby reducing the tax burden for Rutherford County citizens while modeling energy-efficient applications. Whereas Rutherford County Schools retired the initial loan for, from electrical, electricity savings due to changing out school lighting and placed lighting sensor devices in hallways and classrooms eight years ago. Whereas Rutherford County Schools is paying off the E E S I loan from savings experienced by replacing lighting on exterior buildings and parking lots with LED lighting. Whereas Rutherford County Schools just completed installing digital control energy management systems at eight middle and high schools using E E S I loans. Whereas Rutherford County Schools is currently installing digital control and energy management software at twenty-one school system sites using E E S I loans, and are seeking to install similar, uh, utility-saving devices at nineteen additional schools. Whereas Rutherford County Schools experienced a utility cost savings of four point four percent or nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars last year, over the prior year of last year, due to energy-saving initiatives. Whereas Rutherford County Schools has documented proof for three consecutive years of annual cost savings for electricity usage and natural and propane gas costs due to energy-saving initiative. Whereas Smyrna Primary School has now received a green school designation from an independent source for being in the top twenty-five percent of schools nationwide for energy savings due to energy-saving initiative. And whereas Tennessee's Energy Efficient Schools Council has operated without additional state budget funding since its creation by the Tennessee General Assembly in two thousand eight, and has been using loan repayments to rebuild the ninety million in initial funding from lottery proceeds. Whereas additional funding is needed by Tennessee's Energy Efficient Schools Council to expand opportunities in Rutherford County and other Tennessee school districts to become more energy efficient, thereby saving Tennessee taxpayers. Therefore, it being resolved that the Rutherford County School Board and the Rutherford County Commission fully supports the Energy Efficient Schools Council's request to the Tennessee General Assembly for additional funds to expand loans, grant programs, and technical assistance for Tennessee's public schools, resolved this first day of December, two thousand sixteen. I, and you know, one of the things that impressed me most is that the assets of the Energy Efficient School Council, they gave ninety million dollars in two thousand eight out of lottery funds. The assets of that with the one percent and three-quarter percent loans is now higher than the ninety million they put in it. And they haven't used any tax money to pay anybody that works there, secretarial or leader, any other taxpayers' money. And I don't know any other agency of Tennessee that's making more money than was spent on it, you know, and still providing this level of service. It's outstanding.
Making more money than they were given. And, and saving the taxpayers' money.
Yes, which we can prove.
It's one thing for the state to come up with a plan, uh, that, that they theorize can work. It's another thing for a system to put it into practice, and Rutherford County certainly has done that, in no small part because of the outstanding work of, of Mr. Clardy and all of your staff. Uh, it's not just the careful planning in the office that takes advantage of doing all the paperwork correctly and dotting all the i's and taking care of the, the information exchange with the State Department. But in addition to that, the guys, the boots on the ground to change out these fixtures, to change out these, uh, the ballast and, and, and all of the things in the field. And all of that has been done expertly, and then to monitor it, and be able to quantify exactly what we have saved. But it's easy to see in the budget process where, year after year, how many of us can think of our energy consumption? Our electric bill from N E S, our gas bill from Piedmont, our, 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 you know, gas bill at the pump. Our energy usage in Rutherford County schools has not gone up for three years. That is Rutherford County wisdom that should be reflected by our state legislators as a solution for more systems who are struggling outside of this. Our own ideas here in Tennessee benefiting Tennesseans. I strongly support this resolution.
That, that figure, and number six there is, uh, I don't know the exact figure, but that's pretty, that's pretty close two cents on the education portion of the tax rate.
Our conservative, our conservative Jeff Sandby gave us these figures, and if he couldn't prove it, there's no way he would have provided.
That's about two pennies, um, on the, on the educational tax rate, and, uh, and I know that, um, I know that the committee that you all presented this to was very impressed with that, and or such means if you, you, if you get that money, you can do some other things with it. And that, that reflect in instruction, Mr. Mr. Clardy?
I became aware today of a grant that I think we can get through the Energy Efficient School Initiative. And, uh, Ms. Rutherford, when you recall that Paul Cross was discussing the lighting in, in the special ed area. I think that I'm gonna grant from thirty to fifty thousand dollars to do a special ed school. And I'd like to do a Christiana Middle School. So that'll, that's coming down the pike, and that's freedom for the system.
It, it, there were only five school districts of a hundred and forty-plus that have not used E E S I. So this is broad-based for legislators everywhere. And, and the initiative he's talking about now, the special ed lighting, they're piloting in two or three places. And what they're finding is, by being able to have LED lights, that they can adjust the level of lighting, um, because very often, students that have these disabilities, um, too much lighting actually interferes with their learning. And so their initial, he wasn't ready to say firmly, but their initial study is, it's increasing the learning for these students in these classes by adjusting that level and colorization of the lighting. So anyway, um, that was, I didn't put it in here because it's still a study, but the study looks good at this point.
We're going to end up being part of that study, and you can adjust the color spectrum on those to, uh, cut down on seizures and that type of thing, and it's got a very low liquor rate on them also. So we're working on that, but one of the things that we're, I'm on the E E S I council and have been since the inception of it, uh, as a member, but we are, have been approached by some of legislators, uh, that have suggested giving us another seventy-five million dollars to, uh, do some other good things with. So the resolution will hopefully encourage the rest of legislature to, uh, consider that and maybe, uh, present us with some more lottery money to maybe do some even better things than we've been doing for the last eight years.
Need a motion to approve the resolution if there are no further comments or questions.
So moved.
Ms. Moore, thank you.
Second.
Mr. Holiday, thank you for the second, any comment? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, there is none. I wish I'd known about that color of the lighting years ago, I could have used that as an excuse in physics, uh.
I could put it in here, but me too.
It may be too late for me, I don't know. Uh, number eight, uh, other items, and I want to mention this for certain, um, before Mr. Hodge beats me to it, and maybe Mr. Young, or Mr. Estes, or somebody else. Uh, next week, we're going to, uh, honor, I believe, the Central Middle School cross-country with a state championship. Uh, Oakland High School has an opportunity Saturday night. Um, they will represent the Rutherford County. For the nineteenth time since nineteen seventy, a Rutherford County team will be in the state championship game. That's pretty good, folks. That includes Smyrna and Riverdale, and of course Oakland, this will be Oakland's, I hope they get it, I'm not gonna jinx them. But if they should win this football game, this will be their fourth state title, and, uh, out of, out of six attempts. And that will be a super night, that's, uh, I hope I didn't say Friday night, uh, uh, maybe I didn't. It's Saturday night, uh, I think kickoff is scheduled for around sevenish, I believe. And, um, for some unknown reason, it's in cookful, I have no idea why anybody would. But anyway, there it is. Um, anything else on the other items?
Mr. Chairman, I will highlight again, we've seen an example tonight with the, uh, Energy Efficient Schools Initiative, uh, resolution, that the best ideas come from Rutherford County. Uh, we have a proven track record of, uh, of, of things that really do work in schools. And, uh, we had the opportunity on November the fifth, board members were present at the state school board convention where, uh, Senator Jim Tracy and Representative Pitts both came and spoke with school board members about the legislative process. Uh, and one of the things that was raised in that, uh, session was the wisdom in the nickel that is set aside in Rutherford County for, uh, maintenance projects and capital improvements. Uh, that is wisdom that is proven here in Rutherford County for our facilities to be among the finest, uh, in, in the state of Tennessee. Even facilities that are thirty years old or more, uh, are still very, very effective facilities because of the wisdom of our county commission in setting aside, uh, dollars that have to be spent on maintenance. It is so effort, it is, is so easy for us to kick that can down the road if we did not follow Dr. Bullion's, uh, wisdom in, uh, in setting aside specific dollars for that. And we should do that with all depreciating assets, not only our facilities, but also technology. And the state legislature, uh, will hear that from me at least on December the twelfth. Um, in addition to that, uh, the Tennessee School Boards Association adopt, or looked at, uh, twelve resolutions and adopted several of those. And, uh, I, I want to highlight those to my fellow board members, because there are, there are some in those uh, that we should take a look at and, uh, and possibly bring up on the twelfth as well.
One tiny correction, Mr. Holiday, please do not be offended, okay?
Yep.
Ms. Moore is gonna do that for us on the fifth. And the, the, the items, I believe, are you not?
That's what I had requested be put on the agenda.
Right, and, uh, uh, many of us were there, and we, and I think we adopted everything but one, right, I believe. Uh, there was one maybe we did not adopt, or maybe it was two. Um, we got so excited. Uh, we got so excited because they were, they were putting Mr. Blair in office where he's king of the entire southeast or something, I'm not sure what he's, what he's doing, but he's in charge anyway. But anyway, uh, I think she's gonna bring us up on the, on the exact resolutions on the fifth, is that, that, that was right?
That's my plan, yes.
Okay, uh, well, Ms. Michaels has put it on the agenda, and her agenda, as you know, is award-winning agenda for fifth and sixth, though, okay. As, um, you know, any, anything else under other items? Okay, we are adjourned, thank you so much.